Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the school committee meeting of August 18th, 2020 to order. I will take a motion to open the meeting.
Uh huh.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. We only have a few action items in front of us tonight. The first is you have in front of you the MOA that was reached between the district and the EBA, or the committee and the EBA for our vote tonight for our new contract dated September 1st, 2019 to August 31st, 2022. Before we move on that motion, is there any questions that any of you may have for the superintendent about that MOU or the contract? Hearing none, I would take a motion to approve the CBA between the East Bridgewater School Committee and the East Bridgewater Education Association dated September 1st, 2019 to August 31st, 2022.
Uh huh.
Moved by Ellen.
Second.
Second by Teresa. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Secondly, you have with you the revised 2020 to 2021 school year calendar. Now superintendent, this is, we've conferred with the EBA and they're in agreement with the dates that we're proposing?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions about the revised school calendar for the year? I would take a motion to accept the revised 2020-2021 school year calendar.
Uh huh.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Superintendent, you wanted to update us on a few things before we go anywhere else?
Sure. Last week, we were asked about our HVA system and our air quality in all three buildings. Right now, we have thumbs up on Central School and the junior senior high school. They're still at the Mitchell School, and the reason being is because so many districts are asking for this air quality at this time, and this gentleman or this, his company is being pulled and pushed all around. So they were in the Mitchell School for half the day Monday. They'll be back, I believe, tomorrow and finish up by Friday. They'll give us a verbal on Friday, and then we'll get a written report, hopefully as soon as possible. I can't tell you the timeframe. Brian Kylie obviously is working with them and meeting them at the buildings. John went down there the other day and met with them. At that time, we had thumbs up at Central School. We had thumbs up at the junior senior high school. They were at the Mitchell School at that time.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
A couple of things. I know that people are seeing a lot of information coming out from, whether it's DESI, CDC, local board of health, the MIAA. That is brand new information today. We're just getting it off the desktop. I need people just to remember to take a deep breath because everything is fluid at this time. And I know that on the commissioner's desk and I know that at the MIAA, that there was some guidance put out today that we could possibly have some fall sports. They wouldn't start till after September 18th or September 18th start. So now you've already pushed us back about half a month anywhere, almost two months after practice and things like that. There's some guidance. I just received this, so I don't know all the guidance. But I do want our kids to know, our student body, our coaches, that if we can play, we're going to play. And if we can get kids out on the field for social interaction and to be, and to get out there and do some activity and to be with their peers, we would love to do so. I think cross-country will be one of our loaded sports this year. I'm hoping to see, I'd like to see if this doesn't come to fruition. I did speak to Dr. Williams today about possibly doing inter-squad and intramurals. And John Shay, and we just talked about how that would work and be able to have the kids out there with their peers in their own school, even if you're, you know, playing soccer against an inter-squad or you do a six-on-six games, or we do fall ball, softball, and baseball. And it's important to me to have the kids to be active and to get back engaged socially with their peers. Last night, I left here at 6:30 and looked out at the field. I can't even believe how many kids were out there for youth football. There had to have been, I don't know, 75 to 100 kids doing calisthenics, you know, I think it's strength and conditioning. Gina, is that? The strength and conditioning? These kids need this. They need to get out and they need to be with their friends. They need to be with their peers. And I know it's scary, and I know that people are nervous about that. But when you hear the kids out there laughing and, when I walked to the car last night, I watched for a few minutes. They were clapping for each other. They were yelling for each other. They were all socially distanced. The coaches were wearing their masks. I mean, we're following the protocols, and so I feel really confident that we could do that. I do know, and as you do, we have lots of discussions. We had a task force that was put together. I think 23 teachers and had our administration team up there, 14, and we, I think it was 18 parents. So we've had a lot of discussion. I actually stayed out of some of the meetings and walked around and went back to my office because I don't want to be an influence on this. I want to hear what parents want. I can tell you that parents are glad that we have chosen a hybrid model. I can tell you that. They are, Dr. Williams is going to go over some things in a minute about what that model looks like and talk a little bit about the opt-out and what remote learning may look like and just give an overview. Very simple. But I can tell you, parents do like the hybrid model. It is scary. Everybody's scared. But I was on a lighthouse meeting today with the South Shore superintendents. We're all doing this. Waymoth right now. They are not going back. They are in remote at this time. And at this time, they are the only school that was on the lighthouse meeting today that was full remote at this point. And we had big districts on there. We had Plymouth on there. So, I mean, that's a big district. And we're all working together. We're hearing the same concerns. I can tell you that every superintendent up on that meeting today, we're concerned just as much as the teachers are, just as much as our staff is, our instructional support assistants, our nurses, our custodians, our food servers, everybody that's at the buildings, whether you are, whether you're right up in front of the students teaching in kindergarten or whether you are before and after-school attendee, service provider, everybody's in the same boat. This isn't just East Bridgewater. And I want people to understand that. We're not the only school district that's doing this. We're all in this together, and we've got to work together to get there. I did write a letter yesterday to faculty and staff talking about the district's expectations, my expectations of our faculty and staff. I did, I will be retracting one of the, one of my lines in there. I had said that DESI and the MTA had an MOU allowing kids, teachers, to be able to go to their own school district or go to, so that the, so if I'm a teacher in East Bridgewater and I live in West Bridgewater, my child will go with you for five days in West Bridgewater or they could come with me. That has not been signed at DESI. That was just a very fluid thing. I actually talked to Derek Swenson last night and superintendent of Bridgewater-Ranham, and he said, hey Liz, I just checked on that with Jeff, who is the commissioner. We have Commissioner Riley's texts, and we can text him with, he says, no, it's still on the table. We're trying to get it through because we want to make sure that teachers have help and support. It just hasn't been signed yet. So that was my mistake. And I said, that was my mistake. I did talk to, I think there was 27 upstairs today up on the lighthouse. We decided as the 27 superintendents that we would make a list of who would, it would be a local decision and up to the superintendent. I can tell you, out of the 27, 27 people said, 27 of my colleagues said, yes, if we can help and support each other and it doesn't confine our space issues, we're certainly ready to help and support. Big districts like Bridgewater-Ranham may have a tough time doing things like that, or Whitman Hansen or Middleborough, and we understand that. But that doesn't mean that the student is always in the class. It may mean we just have the student here in the library on a remote day doing remote things. But those things will come later, and we'll try to get those things out. But I did tell my colleagues today, and everybody's like, a lot of people were under the same impression. When we got up there, I said, that's my fault. They thought that it was assigned MOU. But the MTA and DESI are still working out a lot of, a lot of the issues at this time. So with that being said, I know that we have a short meeting tonight. I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams and I decided as we moved into the COVID reopening process that Dr. Williams would work with the principals and the curriculum instruction piece. I will take, I'm taking over just totally human resources operations and facilities and working with Nick Domenello on a pretty much daily basis on a lot of the human resources and things like that, on our students who opt out, teachers opting out, the timelines that we have to do things by and some other things that are coming up as we discussed. But Dr. Williams met with the principals yesterday. They're getting their plans together, working on cohorts, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Williams because they're getting their plans ready.
Thank you.
I think this is working. Yeah. Great. Yep. So I have left, actually, at each of your seats. Good evening. Hi, everyone. Sorry. I've left at each of your seats, really just all the thinking that's gone on over the past few weeks now that as a district, we've decided to move forward with a hybrid approach and now tonight, that now that you've approved the calendar. We're starting to get some clarity in our thinking as to how we move forward with a consistent line of thinking. And so you'll see, you know, the first part just kind of talks about our overall goal. By having a remote-first approach, we're making sure that we're considering the needs of all our students, those students that are in person, those students that are hybrid and working remote on certain days, and those students that are fully remote. Because it is a fluid situation, we want to make sure that we have a solid plan that's going to allow for flexibility for students to move in and out of those plans or a district to move in and out depending on what happens in the state level. And just making sure that we have guiding principles as we develop our plans and keeping those not only predictable and consistent for families, but making sure that they're predictable and consistent for staff and students as well. So really, when you break it down, there's more than just the three models. There's four. Cohort A and Cohort B resemble each other in the fact that they're in-person two days in home. It's just A is here Monday, Tuesday, and B is here Thursday, Friday, with Wednesday being a remote day. We have a Cohort C, which is actually our students that we're going to attempt to get them in more days than the typical hybrid. And we talked about that early on as our students with high needs. Also, students in our English language learner population, as well as to the superintendent's point, securing spots for our students who have family members that are educators and making sure that we secure their attendance at their own school district. And then D is actually our students who are fully remote. But making sure that all of those are connected so that even our students who are fully remote have opportunities to still connect with their teacher and with their peer. Because we're hoping that this is not permanent. This is temporary, and we want to make sure that students are able to reengage with their peers and teachers and feeling like they've been part of the system all along. And then below that is two additional models that we're looking at with our preschool and our kindergarten. Right now, with our numbers, our preschool can operate as it was intended because we have the spacing available within our preschool to ensure that we can keep the cohorts the way they are. Kindergarten, there's been lots of conversation, and what we feel is vast is for our kindergarten students to have face-to-face every day. In order for us to be able to do that, it's an AM and PM, sort of back to the old days of kindergarten where, at the state level, we're still only obligated to provide that half-day program for them. So the typical 425 hours as opposed to the 900 hours or 850 is what it's been adjusted to. So the 425 hours would still be satisfied in that half-day, and parents would then have an option. Students could engage on a remote level to complete the rest of their day, or it can be an opportunity for some free play and opportunities for them to engage in more social activities with their friends and family. So we're still working through those. I know the questions come up about homeschool versus remote. The biggest difference is, you know, remote learning is part of our academic day, and students would be expected to engage during the hours of our academic day, whereas homeschool gives freedom and flexibility for students to work on their own schedule at their own pace, as long as they're adhering to the hour timeframe. Like I said, I apologize. This is kind of like everything that's been on our brains for the last couple of weeks. Additional things for us to think about that Wednesday and what it will look like. Certainly, it's an opportunity for an entire class to be together remotely with the teacher, having synchronous learning opportunities for an entire class. It will only be a half-day so that we can give a half-day for staff to work as grade-level teams and department teams to make sure that their lesson planning is staying consistent across grade levels.
Staff will be remote or staff will be here?
So, right now, staff will be here, is what the plan is, that staff will be here. We're still contemplating whether our high-needs students will be here in person in the morning and whether kindergarten will continue with their AM and PM and identifying opportunities for the kindergarten staff to have other planning times. So we're still working out the Wednesdays. And then also the study hall approach for those students where it's a remote day for them, but parents need support with daycare. So making sure that we have supervision in a safe place for students to access their remote learning while parents are working. And that would be, you know, whether we're repurposing areas within the school buildings or, as the superintendent mentioned, we're looking at spaces within the community that that can happen as well. So it will kind of relieve some burden to families trying to find childcare while also still having a responsibility for their students to access their remote learning. I did throw in here the synchronous and asynchronous definitions because I know we keep throwing those terms around, so I just want to make sure that we're clear on what both of those look like for students and parents. And then the training involved. Not only did my subgroup for the task force look at designing or redesigning the calendar to account for professional development, we also created a survey for staff. So you'll see the last two pages are the results of the survey. We wanted to hear from staff. In a hybrid approach, what do they feel they need the most support in? And that's how we'll design. We'll front-load our PD to be in that first week and then prioritize the last six days for them to really be able to sit with grade-level teams and department teams to utilize the tools that they learned to create their lesson plans and their unit development. So this was just really the information that we gathered, and now I'll be meeting with the PD Academy on Thursday for us to actually set the schedule for how those days will be designed for opportunities for people to have workshops on each of these platforms. And then I mentioned on the training as well. You know, we certainly need to consider the training needs of family members who have students at home, as well as staff members who would be considered facilitators to students on those remote days, making sure they understand the platforms and can assist students in accessing those. So this is really kind of the jumping-off point for us to really sit down and develop like daily schedules. What does it look like from a student perspective? What does it look like from a teacher's perspective? And as the superintendent mentioned, this is where we now need to, you know, reengage with staff to find out the best ways that we can create these schedules so that we have that simultaneous learning going on remotely as well as in-person. I'd be happy to-
Any last questions for Kim Hahn to serve?
So those, yeah, there was, the last question was, any other things to consider?
Can I ask a question? Do you talk about the ICA or whatever? Are we, should we, are any of them opting out or do we even know?
We, Lucini hires their bus drivers.
No, I know. I just didn't know if you had heard anything from him.
He has not. We actually just, he just, they just received our negotiated, the contract that we negotiated with them, the payment. So they were holding off on doing, it was tough to get some things done. Now that we've done that, John is working with Gail, and we're just starting to get the bus routes. We do have an individual here in the district who used to do it at Whitman Hansen. Well, we hired as a teacher last year, is going to start helping John do it because it's a, it's a big task to do that. But as of right now, we have not heard.
Well, I have.
Oh, okay, then John.
As far as bus drivers go, they should, Bill Lucini said they should be all set.
They're pretty hiring, hiring pretty aggressively right now, so.
I just didn't know, you know.
Yeah, no, they, he said they-
The opt-out was going to be an issue.
No, he said they should be all set.
I'm good.
I have, I've forgotten.
Thank you.
So we, we have gone out and looked at properties and space. We have spoken to the YMCA. We have been down to the Council of Aging that Mr. Noble brought us down to take a look at. Just to take a look, we've looked at, you know, our own library. We looked at Town Hall. We thought about buying modulators. There'd be no way we could get them here this quickly and get them commissioned and all set up. We have an opportunity to go to the oldest school building. I believe that that's what they said, it would be TJ Smith's down the street. We were at TJ Smith's yesterday. John, myself, Mrs. Byrne, the building inspector, the fire chief, the police chief. Tom and Joe Smith were there. Mr. Sheedy was there, and we got an opportunity to walk around the facility. It was in terrific shape. It is up to fire code. It is safety. We would add a few cameras on the outside of the building. We thought about, you know, as much as I want to bring kindergarten in and try to get kindergarten full day up at Central School, we would still have to hire a lot of teachers, and we probably would still not have the space. Then we thought, well, we would bring pre-K down there because they have ramps and it could do some of our therapeutic classrooms. As the day went on and the conversation continued throughout the day and pretty much into the evening, and then this morning, Dr. Williams and Kate, Mrs. Byrne and myself, just having these conversations, the principals having a conversation. We need spaces for young children for before and after-care and during the daycare because we want to help our parents out as much as we can. The community has been a tremendous, tremendous supporter of myself and our administration and the district, since I have come and probably always, but I just can only talk about my town. It behooves us to find a space that we can house kids. John came down with us to make sure we could get the tech. They have Comcast. We would bring our tech people down and set it up. We could have remote learning going on down there during the days that kids needed before and after-care. It's a very clean space. There's outside facility with fencing. We're going, Mrs. Clifford would probably be the administrator on-site because it is a COVID expenditure, really. She is our COVID representative for the district. We put an administrator down there, but Lisa Verasso is still overseeing the program, obviously, but it would still be an administrator on-site. We'd have to probably hire some more people, but it's an opportunity for us to support our parents. John and I did, we did square footage today. We talked about finances with TJ Smith. They're coming tomorrow at 12 o'clock to sit with us and discuss with us. We spoke to Nick Domenello. Nick Domenello did contact John Clifford from the town side to see what the town's obligation was. This is actually a school committee decision. If you want, I've asked the, we're going to speak to them tomorrow at noon time just to have them here, and then we'll give you a little bit more of what they, what they're looking for, what they're, what they're doing. They were sweet gentlemen. They opened that building up to us. They want it to see us use it. They feel it's an opportunity for them to give back, an opportunity for us to get in there. It is the cleanest space that I've seen, and it's ready to use today if we need it. If we needed to get someplace and to go someplace, we could get in there today without even moving their furniture. And really, it's only tables and chairs in there. The chapel has been already cleaned out, and so we have an opportunity to get in there, to use it, to bring our own furniture down there for the, for the, for the kids. We're buying yoga mats for kids to be able to eat outside and have their own space and their own learning spaces. So we think that that's probably, obviously, Dr. Williams just went over that, said, you know, we have the space for pre-K and can house them. We could do an AM and PM kindergarten if that's the, if that's the route we see fit to do, and we can handle that. This would be another satellite for our parents to be able to go to, to have an opportunity for children of like ages to be socially together when their parents can't be there for remote learning or the Wednesdays or being dropped off before, you know, you may have to get a van to go back and forth or those types of things. We also, that is, that's one opportunity, the before and after-care room that we have taken over at the Mitchell School. Do you remember the old shop that we've been talking about for the last year and a half? We had a meeting last week. I told them it was imperative to get done. John went down on Friday. I was not here on Friday. They've taken out the doors. HVAC started this week. We are, we should be ready by next week to start rolling out, to paint, then roll out the carpets and get the tables down there for before and after-care. We'll have two areas for before and after-care. The library here at the high school, right now, we are looking at, and the principals are looking at, using that area for students from 7 through 12 to be able to use that as a remote place, and we would have a remote teacher in that area if needed. And there would be someone in the, there would be-
People on their remote days that could come into the building to work on.
Yeah. And that's all. And there's computers in there that could be accessed. I mean, obviously, all of our students are going to have Google Chromebooks, but there are computers in there, some desktops that can be utilized. So, I mean, we've got spaces now and that could be utilized for our kids, so they're not a little bit more spread out. So I'll give you some more information after we meet with them tomorrow. We'll keep you in the know. Nick will be not in that meeting, Zoom meeting, but he will, if you would like to take a walk through the building or facility next week, once we talk to Tom and Joe tomorrow, they're coming to meet with John and myself here in the business office, and then we'll, we'll go from there, and I'll let you know what we came up with, and then we'll go through. I do want to let you know that the money that we use and that we're budgeting with is from the Plymouth County COVID Cares Act money. This is not from our budget. It is not from the town's budget. This is for COVID expenditures. And as you saw, we gave you a list out today. There's about $619,000 left, $620,000 left in the COVID cares. So we're in good space. We have some other things that we are purchasing over the next couple of weeks, and John's going to talk about those on Tuesday of next week when he gives a financial report. But everything that we're doing right now is due to COVID. Everything that we do and everything that we talk about every day. So just want to let you know on TJ Smith's, and they said that they would, if we, if we do go into a lease with them, into a rental agreement, it's between the school committee and them, and they would be here next Tuesday, August 25th. The reason I'm asking for the quickness of this is because we need to get into that space immediately so that John and IT can set that up for the tech. We have Comcast down there, but we'd have to upgrade, I think, a little bit or boost it. We would want Mrs. Byrne and Mrs. Verasso, Dr. Williams, to take a look through on what we're bringing down there.
So what would we be voting on? The funding for it, the permission to open the site?
The permission to go into a lease agreement, rental agreement with TJ Smith's on behalf of the school department to use this facility. And we're looking for, I'm looking for September 1, August 25th date, or whatever it was. September 1, we're looking for, I put it to February, I think, 29th. Because we hope by then, which I know that some people don't think will go back. We hope because they are a banquet and wedding- We hope because they are a banquet and wedding facility and they hope that they'll have a wedding in April, so we want to make sure that we can, we can do the right things too. So that's, that's all I had tonight. But I wanted people to know that we are looking at every option. There's not a lot of open space or big buildings in East Bridgewater to take over.
That's outside-the-box thinking because, I mean, I live 300 yards from that place and I never even thought about that as a possibility, so.
I mean, Hart Hinks, that facility was brought up in one of our meetings.
Forty-seven building.
Where 47 is now or the old stop in Shaw?
Shaw.
Shaw's was in there. We thought about that building. But this is, if you've been down there, if you've ever been there for, I mean, I went to the Kiwanis Club a couple of years ago or last year. It's so clean, it's so well-capped. It's, and it's, already has its fire, I mean, they got the jams on the door, they have, they really, it's a very, it's a unique place. He brought us and showed us the, what, 1830?
1882.
1882 schoolhouse. It's a sign over the door. So, and I think some of our grandparents may like the fact that we're using that facility too in, in East Bridgewater.
Great. Thank you. That's outside-the-box. Awesome. And Dr. Williams, thank you for earlier too. I didn't say thank you.
No.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before, just one last thing for the board, just so we're not surprised. Next week, you'll be getting copies this week of some proposed policies that came out of the policy subcommittee. I'm going to ask you to waive the typical reading process that we follow because these are COVID-related policies that need to be in place before schools open. So you'll get those, we should be able to get them to before they close the business this week, tomorrow, we'll see. And if you have any questions, you can call Lizarai and ask about them. One of them is a mask policy for staff and students in the building. Another one is a general COVID broad policy that allows amendments to existing school policies for COVID reasons. And then there's a third one that's a Title IX compliance policy that will go in conjunction with the handbooks that we're going to be looking at next week. So we are allowed to waive the reading for the Title IX because it's a federal law, a federal mandate, so we need to enact that before school comes back into session. And will the student handbooks from the high schools' language be changed to reflect that new policy?
They will, and we just talked about this the other day. We'll probably put an addendum in.
Okay.
Might be a, might have a waiver or a loose-leaf addendum going inside the handbook because we are on tight time at this point and we're moving as quickly, we are, I can't stress it enough, the administrators are moving as fast as they can. We're moving as fast as we can. I think that everybody's on board at this time.
It's crunch time.
Yeah, it's crunch time. If it was any other year, next week, next week, we'd be given the convocation to say welcome back and we're so happy to have our teachers back and the schools would be, you know, we're ready to go and everybody would be happy and right now, we'd be having this meeting and we'd see football probably coming in from practice and girls' soccer coming back from their first, you know, round-robin game or, you know. So it's a little bit different, but we're working on it and so there are a few things that, some changes.
We appreciate everything all three of you are putting together. I know stress is at an all-time high right now in our field and we appreciate everything you're doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I move that we close tonight's meeting.
So move.
Move by Teresa. Second by Amanda. All in favor? Have a good evening, everyone.
Say well, everybody.
Did he leave?
Nick.